Can I minimize that part?
Mayor, what's your standard for Diet Mountain Dukes? This is July 3rd, 2023.
That's the expiration date. Would you drink milk?
That's a Best Buy date, isn't it? Well, I'll work on them for you as little as I can.
They've got them upstairs. If you go up in the staff lounge and get them.
It was working last night.
When they go past the Best Buy date, I can most easily.
I was a real good guy.
I'm so proud of you.
Okay.
They approved it. It's quarters. Just because of quality, but they approved it.
You're fine.
Thank you. Very good.
Didn't show us.
Yes. So he thought it went out of bounds or mind during the planning report? He just didn't know how to have it.
No, because Sheri Anderson, but in some way. Yes. I want to be good. No, I want to be that.
So you know what we really need to do? See the front window from the back? It can happen. It can happen with the audience and then first music sounds on this guy or something else.
Dr. Cody.
Lock them out.
What's next?
Dark tent.
Planets. Planets. Can I minimize this? Can I, can I minimize this screen or do I need to cut it out?
I think we had about fifteen last night.
She's the one that.
Fifty forty and fifty showed up.
So about that percent.
So if I can get somebody out of here.
Hopefully YouTube and Facebook gets out more.
I didn't set it to anybody else.
Yeah. Yeah. So just minimize it.
And we're going.
I think we're there. I feel like I still have to have a reminder. You did do it. But I, yeah, there was, I thought it was like two or three questions being published.
I say it just.
Do you ready?
Yeah, they're good.
The interface or something. So we got this one right here in Jim's chart.
Okay. It's a few minutes past five and so I'd like to call this Santa Clara City Council Combined Work Meeting with the Heritage and Planning Commission meeting to order. Appreciate everyone who's here tonight. Hope you feel welcome. My name's Mayor Rick Rosenberg. We have present from the city council tonight. Councilman Ben Shakespeare, Councilwoman Lena Mathis, Councilwoman Krista Hinton, and Councilman Jared Waite. I haven't heard from Councilman Drake, but maybe he'll join us. We'd like to begin the meeting with, with general citizen public comment. If you have come tonight to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda, then you need to fill out one of the little orange slips and hand it to the staff and I'll give you a little bit of time. Is there anybody here tonight to address the council on something that's not on the agenda? Okay, see you in none. We'll go ahead and go into the working agenda. Oh, one more comment. The, the slips for the item number one or item number two, you really don't need to fill out the slip. So if you haven't got one, don't worry about it. I'll give everybody time to comment during the meeting on those two items. So we'll begin with the working agenda. Item three A, general business. Item number one is the Historic District Design Guidelines Discussion. We're really looking for public input here. We've invited the, the planning commission and the heritage committee to, to join us for this meeting. They could be here in the audience. I know some of the planning commission members are here. Some of the staff that work with those committees are here. And, or they could be watching it on, on YouTube or Facebook. And so we really want to get the, the public input on the, the guidelines. The Historic District Design Guidelines is being reviewed by the Heritage Committee. And we want to get, we're seeking public input. We received some emails on it. To start us off, I've asked Jim if he would just go through seven slides, I think, that talk about the, the general plan, the existing city approved general plan, and the, the kind of the, the overall intent of the, of the general plan relative to the historic district. And so I've asked him to, to lead off with that and then we will go to the public comment section. So Jim?
Thanks, Mayor Rosenberg and council members. Both our planning commission and heritage commission that are here in person or on via Zoom. We have at least one or two. We're working on the presentation that I put together. It was sent earlier this morning and looking for it to, before we can put it out for you and go through it. What I can do in the meantime, I can do it a little bit differently. I just wanted to take some pieces out of our general plan that are specific to our downtown area. And give me just a second to pull it up. I can do it the old fashioned way. Hopefully, as I'm looking for what I want to talk about, we have a few where people walk in.
It just came up.
There it is.
But he's on the TV.
All right. Excuse me for that. Thank you for your patience. So if we go to chapter four of our general plan, it specifically talks about our historic downtown. And we have historic downtown core objective. And that core objective states the following. It says, continue to strengthen the town core. For example, density incentives makes use infill as a vibrant residential, cultural, and commercial center, but reserve its historic character and scale. And so that is the actual objective. And then we have seven policies that go with that downtown core objective for our historic district. Policy four point one states, the city encourages sensitive future development in the historic downtown core that increases the variety of businesses and residential uses in ways that complement and protect our important historic resources. Policy four point two states, to avoid flooding hazards in the historic downtown core, clustering new development is encouraged to preserve the floodplain for agriculture, river access, and emergency management. Policy four point three states, all new mixed use or commercial development in the historic downtown core should expand out from the existing commercial and mixed use areas to reduce potential strip development and encourage walking from one store to the next. And then it makes reference, oh, thank you. We have it on the overhead now. And so there is the core objective. If we could go to policy four point three. There we go. So I just wrote policy four point three, but then it makes reference to chapter three, which is our future land use. And if we go to the next slide, under future land use, it talks about mixed land uses. And as you know, a good amount of the property on Santa Clara Drive is in the historic district mixed use zone. And it states, mixed use land uses will provide pedestrian environments that encourage walking, increase the mix of housing types in the city. And it says specifically along Santa Clara Drive and continue the economic sustainability by increasing the retail tax base. So it specifically brings out Santa Clara Drive and mentions it right here in this section or chapter three of our general plan. If we go to the next slide. Policy four point four indicates more traditional businesses such as farmers markets, mom and pop shops, and restaurants are encouraged to locate in the mixed use and commercial areas of the historic downtown core. Next slide. Policy four point five, all town core development shall be pedestrian oriented, maintain the core areas existing small character, and maintain historic building setbacks. Next slide. Policy four point six, clustering development and preservation of open space is also encouraged for the agricultural areas on the west end of the town core. And then one more slide. Policy four point seven, in the historic downtown core, encourage infill development on the side streets and large back lots. So that's the end of the presentation. We wanted to give ample time to members of the public that are here to speak and, and the city council, as well as planning commission and heritage commission members. And that's where I have Mayor at this point.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to open this discussion just like I would a public hearing. And the rules for the discussion are the same as a public hearing. They're in the back. If you have any questions on it, but basically as long as you stay congenial, we'll continue with the accepting public comment. If anybody wants to use some vulgar language or make accusations or anything that I see as demeaning, then it will get shut down immediately. If you don't sit down, if I ask you to sit down, you'll be asked to leave. And we do have an officer here. And that has happened. So we want to hear everything that you've got to say. We're really concerned about getting your input as we begin the process to update the design guidelines. We want to have the input of the people. We've had a lot of meetings where they say we don't listen. Well, if you don't talk, we can't listen. We want to hear it from you. And so if there's any question, feel free to ask a question as we go through this. There's not necessarily any order. I'm going to do it by invitation. I do need you to state your, your name and your address when you do come forward. Pull the mic down and get it relatively close so it can be picked up. Everything is being recorded, just so that you guys are aware, the meeting is being recorded. It is being videoed as well. And you can go back and watch, watch it after the meeting. If you are uncomfortable coming to the mic and speaking, but you would still like to get a written comment to the city council, the planning commission, and the heritage committee, you can leave us a written comment. You can send an email either to me or a member of the staff, to Brock. You can bring in a letter. We're going to actually transcribe and publish all of the comments. And that will be made available to the heritage committee, the planning commission, and the city council as they go through their deliberations on this. And so those comments will be transcribed. They'll be written. Your name and address will be on them. And they'll be provided to everyone. And so any questions? Great. Council, with your permission, and then we do have, like I say, planning commission members here, several of them here. And I think we've got some others that are, that are watching online. And so we'll go ahead and open it up and ask anyone who would like to offer the city any comment regarding the Historic District Design Guidelines Discussion and any changes that we may want to consider there. Please come to the mic and your voice will be heard.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Haley Kaplan. Let's see, we're supposed to give something else?
Your address.
Address, 1454 Boys Pond Circle, Santa Clara. Thank you for your service, all of you, council members, and as well as the heritage and planning commission. We appreciate your time that you put forth for the city. I would just like to give a quick remark. Just whether you're a sixth generation native Utah Dixie like me, or you're a new neighbor, I think we all are drawn to Santa Clara because we love its charm and its spirit. And it's because of those that have come before us that provide that and continue to, to, to be a part of our city. I drive down Santa Clara Drive multiple times every day because I live down here. And I love it. And I, I mean, there, there's so much uniqueness, uniqueness to it, sorry. The downtown's been preserved for many years by great people, but it can easily, easily be changed with the wrong type of development or something that doesn't fit there. So we, we want to be careful about those guidelines. So I appreciate you guys opening this, this up and, and working towards getting some, some good, clear guidelines. And of course, we may not all agree on specific colors or designs, but we should agree on the general aesthetics and feel. Our bookends are the Town Hall here and Jacob Hamlin Home. And they both have in common that it's a pioneer style, sandstone, brick, that kind of thing. And we have a lot of great quaint businesses that have been successful. Ones that I, that come to my mind that I love obviously are Fry's fruit stand. We have Grandma Tobler's, which is now Ry Luce. The Rose Garden Nursery, grew up going there. And then Swoon, I love what they've done with restoring that historic home to maintain the downtown feel. I would also add that size and density is important to consider. We have other areas of Santa Clara, obviously, that can take on major, larger buildings for retail or higher density for, you know, the vacation rentals and town homes that have already been established. But our historic district is unique and we should try and keep that maintained too. We'd love to see single family homes, multi-use small businesses. We, we can make a lot of businesses work that still fit the, the feel of the downtown. And so I appreciate again the dialogue, keeping this open. I think it would be helpful, hopefully in the future, we can continue to have some interactive meetings where people can share their ideas, work with the heritage committee and all of you. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Haley. Anyone else? Just one public comment?
My name is Marsha Moss. I live at 3943 Brenna Drive. I've only been in Santa Clara for 13 years, but I came from a small town where I operated a business in an old home, in an old district. I kept that alive for 15 years. I think it's so valuable to protect our history. When I left, everybody said they'd step up and take over. They didn't. And it got taken down. And it just broke my heart. I feel like we need to preserve our history. We need to make the feel quaint. We need to make the architecture look like the pioneers. We just need to preserve what we have. And if we have to take something down, we could put something back up that still had that look and that feel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Janine Burton, 31 Bedrock Circle in Santa Clara. I just want to make a comment that I am very much in favor of trying to keep this historic district historic and have a feel that drew me here in the first place. And I think it draws people here. I'm all about history and heritage and I love the fact that we have a space here in Santa Clara that feels like Mayberry, USA. Like, you know, just watching the Andy Griffith show. I want that feel still. I think a lot of residents still want that feel a little bit in the city. So I am for that. I, I believe that there could be, like, the previous people have said, that there's ways to have businesses that would help the city in a way that we could still keep them in luck of the historic area. I would like to ask a question because I don't know how you run this. How do you get on a historic committee? Who, how do you choose these people?
The historic president, or what's the former name?
Commission. Heritage Commission.
Heritage Commission Committee. Heritage Commission.
I've heard it called two or three things and I thought, at first I thought there were two different distinct committees. So it's just one, right?
I used to call them the hysterical committee. But it's a, it's a committee that is established within the ordinance structure. It's a recommending committee to the planning commission.
So they work along with the planning commission?
They do. Anything that comes forward within the historic district has to go to the, to that committee first. And then before it goes to the planning commission. They, and they have guidelines that were developed a number of years ago that, that they use in their review and as well as the general plan language that Jim talked about earlier. To be on the committee, typically you'll have people who let either myself or one of the city council know you're interested. It's an appointment that's made by the mayor with the approval of the council.
Okay. It's an appointment only?
Same as the planning commission. It's not an elected body. It's an appointed body. It is appointed by, by the mayor, approved by the council, and then they serve for a period, I think, of five, five years in that appointment, unless they want to leave. So. Okay?
So it's either the planning committee or the heritage committee. They work together, but the people who are interested in heritage committee go to the planning committee first and then?
No, no. If you're interested in serving on that, you just let us know. When we have an opening, we deliberate. Try and pick the best person and make the appointment, if they're willing to accept it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next? You guys are being shy. Should've gave you numbers when you walked in the door.
I wasn't going to, oh, Sheri Anderson, 2318 Vineyard Drive. I wasn't going to say anything today, but you know, we always have something to say. So anyway, I think when she was talking and she's talking about the, the heritage commission, but we also do have the, the historical society, which you were talking about with historical. So that slide to come up and I did go for that one. But anyway, we were hysterical and people thought we were crazy. And people thought we were overboard, you know, by trying to do the things that we did. But we have Heritage Square today because we were hysterical and because we fought for what we believed in and what we wanted to say. And so we still have the historical society. They're not under, really, they're kind of under you, under the city. I don't know if we're even written in, but we work together. And they've given us the space in the basement for the museum and work with us on everything we do. In fact, when they built this building, we were asked, how should we build it? And we said, let's do a replica of the school. Therefore, we have this building that's much more beautiful and a lot bigger than the school was. But anyway, there's, there's ways that we can all work together. And I was on, back in the day, it was called the Heritage Parts and Trails Commission. And I worked on that commission for seven years, trying to get some kind of guidelines passed for a historical district. And diddly squat happened. And I finally gave up and I thought, well, I'll just have to fight it in my own way. And I was so thrilled when we were at that meeting. We had a wild hat with the heritage commission. When I thought, we have, we have a city council now and a mayor and a city manager that's willing to work together with us. I think we all want the same thing. I think we want to keep Santa Clara beautiful. You know, I was looking, the other day I drove down Tavern at the Street and I saw the old Judd's store right here. And then there's this, I don't know how many stories high building that's right next to it. And I thought, what a shame, you know, that, anyway. I mean, it's a nice building, but still, you know, there still should be shame on St. George is what I'm saying. Uh-oh, this is on another page. I shouldn't even open my mouth. But anyways, I, I just, I just would like to see some teeth in what we have in our, in our, what do you call it, our booklet, you know, that we've done, our guidelines. That's all they are, is just guidelines. They don't have any strong stipulations of can and can't. So every time somebody comes to want to build something on a property, there's all this, you know, big blow up. And if we had something set in place of, of what we want and what we don't want, then we wouldn't have this every time. We would know. And I think we all want not some big, you know, buildings and, I don't know. We want to keep Santa Clara quaint. And a good friend of mine just said to me, you know, Santa Clara is known not for the trees and people, but it's cleanliness. Santa Clara's always been this clean little town where everybody cleans up and, and neat and clean and tidy. And I think that's, that's a good thing. And I think we want to keep that. But we also want to keep, you know, the different historical buildings. And I always have a lot to say. Do I have a time limit? Am I over my limit?
I'm suspending it. Go Sheri, you're fine.
Anyway, you know, take each property in the historic district and maybe discuss each one of those so you know ahead of time, you know, is this something we want to save? Is this something, you know, that can go down and something else can be built there? Just know exactly what we want to do with the historic district and, and keep Santa Clara, you know, the beautiful little town that it is. And, and we've all heard people come into town and say, you know, why do you got something special here? And we do. And that's why we expanded way out. But we're all still Santa Clara and we're all still part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri.
Hi, council members. I'm Stephanie Erksman and I live at 1502 Victor Street in Santa Clara. I also had a planned on talking, but I think that since you want to hear people, I'm going to let you hear. And I just want to say that I appreciate that you're listening to us and that you're recognizing that we all want to work on the same page and that we all want to have the same goals. I agree with everything that's been said before me, that our number one concern is to save the feel of Santa Clara. For me, one of the biggest things is high density. I, I think it's really hard to achieve the quaint pioneer feeling that we have with the high density. I, like Sheri said, when you drive, you see these smaller buildings downtown and then you see huge buildings. I think for me, one of the things I love is seeing the trees. Every time I drive down into the valley, which is constantly, I think you have a feeling and a spirit that is kept here. And I think that there's a way, I like all the ideas that Sheri proposed and that if we can figure out, I understand that there are some, some homes that probably are, they're not inhabitable, you know, they're, and I think that would be a great idea to figure out, you know, what is worth saving? What can we improve? What can we turn into businesses? How to proceed so that, you know, we're all kind of working together to achieve the same goal? And I just wanted you guys to know that I appreciate what you're doing and I hope that you'll continue to hear our voices and what we have to say and that hopefully we can all achieve the same thing and keep Santa Clara the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question that might stir more conversation out there? Is, so if you go, if you go down the downtown, this might be a question for Jim as well because I, I think we went down years ago and, and trying to put some, as Sheri would say, some teeth in that. And we got a lot of pushback from some of the residents on that. So if, if, if you did go downtown and started saying, this home needs to stay, this home doesn't, this, and start, what's the process on that from a, from a property rights standpoint? Are you deeming them historical and then they have to fall under that? At this point, if, if somebody owns in the downtown and you tell them today that they can't, their home must stay and it's now, what's that process and what does that look like? From a city side, maybe from a legal side, obviously you've got property rights and so I, maybe that's a.
Well, you know, my first take on that is, you know, the state decides what's properties meet the requirements to be on the historic register. So you have some properties along Santa Clara Drive that meet those requirements and they have the plaque and the history. You have others that don't, may have been built in the twenties, thirties, or forties. Unless it was uninhabitable, I don't think we would do that. But if someone comes in and let's say they have a home on the front of their property and they have some area in the backyard where they would like to do something else, they would have to go through the process if they were proposing to tear that home down would have to go through the process if they were proposing to tear that home down and redevelop the site. So if someone comes in and wants to remove the home, they don't just get a demolition permit. They have to go through the process of going to the heritage commission, could be multiple times, the planning commission and the city council according to our ordinances that are in place. So there is a process there. And so at some point in time, we may receive something like that, we'd have to take a really good look at it, but there is a definite process that we would have to go through for them to develop the property. Other properties are vacant and empty and they're already zoned historic district mixed use, so if they meet the requirements of that zone, they're permitted use in a lot of cases. So we have to look at each one case by case.
So, so under the, just to be clear, under the ordinance we have today, they have to go through the process of, to do anything on the homes that are on, on the downtown?
Correct.
What's written today?
We have one, just a couple houses down to us, down from us on the east that came to Heritage about a year and a half ago because they want to do some remodeling, uh, they have some crumbling brick and the paint and the roof and to be in compliant with the style of the home, home, and period of that time, they had to go to heritage commission to get a thumbs up and they may be starting on that soon. It's taken them a while to get some funding to make the improvements, but everything is a process. We've been had the antique store come and talk to us, uh, across the street. Um, the house that was, they went through and rezoned it and now it's an antique store directly across the street from us. That went through heritage commission, planning commission and council in their process to convert that to the antique store it is today. That's just been done in the last year.
Thank you, Jim. Go back to the residents. Anyone like to come up and make a comment?
I'm Raf Gardner and I have a home on 2518 Vineyard Drive. As I'm sitting here listening, I think this is the greatest idea ever because I feel like we need to, all of us come together. We need to, the heritage commission needs to work together and when we make a recommendation, we really can't do anything else. And maybe we need to relook at our procedures and our policy to see if maybe we can get one vote or whatever, because we are working hard to try to keep Santa Clara the way we want it to be. But in order to do that, we need our committee, we need planning and zoning, and we need the council to all work together. And we need to, to take a look at what we want collectively as a whole and what we want to accomplish. And it looks like to me, we're here tonight because we do care and hopefully we can do that. I love Santa Clara. I, I voiced everything that Sherri said. I was one of those that, that was hysterical, were hysterical, how we were like that, because we saw a need, we saw the beauty in Santa Clara and, and we want to have that still be with us today and honor those people that gave so much before, so just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Anyone else?
My name is Lynda Anderson and we live at 3561 Sycamore Lane, Santa Clara. And we've only been here for about three and a half years, uh, but we came because of what Santa Clara is. We originally moved from California and we left Hurcan and we kept coming over here and looking and eventually bought a home here and we just absolutely love this little town and we want it to remain the way it is. I know there's several little houses along Main Street that are old and maybe not even anybody's living in, but they're part of the ambiance here and we love it. I, I wish that there was a fund that the city would put together to help, uh, update those houses so that they can be lived in. And I love what Ryder has done, I love what Swoon has done, they kept the ambiance and, and it's still a little Santa Clara and that's what we hope to keep. I mean, we love the trees, but it's not just the trees, it's this little town and we just don't want to see condominiums or multiple house buildings coming here. It's just not part of this little town. It's good for Hurcan, it's good for St. George, but we'd like to keep this little town the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Mayor, I was just gonna mention, I believe Mimi McKenna from our heritage commission is on the Zoom and she sent an email earlier. I think she has some comments she'd like to share based on her email, if she would like.
Is she, where she can speak?
Rick Rosenberg, Rick, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, this is Mimi. I have been watching on Zoom, I'm in Texas at my grandson's birthday party, so I'm sitting in the car, I hope you can hear me. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine, Mimi, thank you.
Okay, um, I've been listening, I think all the comments have been great. Um, I echo, um, particularly Sherri's, I think that she articulated that very well. The only additional thing I would add is, um, the historic guidelines that we have, I think are great, um, but they are geared mostly towards private homes. That's to me where we run into the problem is now we have, um, businesses that are wanting to build commercial buildings in our historic district. And I think that people, it would be helpful if builders knew in advance what was expected of them and then also it would be helpful, um, for the heritage and the planning and the city council to have specific things put in place that dealt with the commercial development in the historic district. So that's kind of really what I'm pushing for and hoping that we can put together. I think we might need a special committee maybe to do that. I personally don't have the skills for that, I would love to help, but I, I couldn't write those. But I think that we have talented people that we could put on a committee that could do that. So that is the only thing I wanted to add to what's been said is that when I look at this, I'm looking at it primarily for future commercial development because I know that it's gonna come. I mean, we all know that it's gonna come. And what do we want our city to look like in 20 years? We still want that feel, we want that beauty and it's our chance now, we have an amazing opportunity to help develop the historic district into something that will be beautiful for generations. So that's my thought.
Mimi, let me expand on it, maybe follow up with a question. So you're looking for like, um, requirements that would apply to maybe building heights, square footage, um?
Yeah, like for example, yeah, the, the heritage commission has taken some time to research different cities throughout Utah primarily. Um, we've looked at Midway, Heber, Salt Lake City, they all have, um, ways that they have addressed this in their community. I'm gonna use Midway as an example. What they have done in their city is they have two committees that do what our one committee does. They have a committee that looks over the residential historic buildings and they have, it's called the, um, Vision Architectural Committee that looks over the commercial buildings that are developed in Midway. And again, we both have Swiss heritage, but I'm not saying we need to look like Midway, like I want to make that clear. What I do like about Midway is that they have put, gosh, a, a huge list of things that they want to see on their commercial buildings, um, such as a certain pitch of roof, um, a certain percentage of rock, you know, many different things, because they have a, a really specific look that they're going for. They want that Bavarian Swiss look in their city. That's not what we want in our city necessarily, but I like the way that they have approached it. They have said, okay, here's our list of, of architectural elements, design elements that we want you to incorporate in your building when you build a commercial building in our city. So I, I feel like that's something that we could do in Santa Clara, we could say, we want, you know, a certain, and, and again, I'm just throwing these ideas out, we want a certain height, you know, maximum height requirement, we want there to be transoms above the doors and the windows, we want there to be a bulkhead at the bottom of, of the building so that the windows don't go all the way to the ground, we want there to be the front door recessed because, you know, there's just certain historical elements that will make even a new building look like it, it belongs in a historic district. So I think that, that we could put together, a group of people could put together some of those things, you know, with the help of the city and I feel like we all want the same thing, like Sherri said. And I, I just, to me, that is not a hard thing to do, is to put together some design guidelines that can help guide the future of commercial buildings in the historic district. Does that answer your question?
It does, it does. That's what I was looking for. I like the idea of the, the separate committee and also the, you know, separate guidelines to address the businesses. I know when, 20 some odd years ago, the city tried to do architect, the first time we tried to do architectural guidelines, um, I was on the city council and there was a lot of pushback from residents in the city, but I, I think part of the problem was is we were trying to push some of these requirements that you just mentioned on everything. The residential down to the, you know, the color of the doors and stuff like that and people, um, people in the downtown came out and were, were pretty upset about, uh, having to have, you know, follow city requirements on what they were gonna do with their home in the downtown. Um, it's, it's a little bit of a different animal when you're talking commercial, um, especially new commercial, um, that I think you could probably, you know, develop those. And I think the city can, we can get with some, you know, professional, you know, home designers and architects and, and come up with some of that list to, to help you guys work through that. So I appreciate your comments, Mimi, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Let me just say one last comment. I feel like we are in such a unique position because really the Santa Clara Historic District only has, you know, one or two original businesses, really just one, the Merck. It really just has the Merck. You know, Uncle Nanny's is in a historic home, but it wasn't a commercial building. So we really don't have, we can't say, oh, let's, let's keep everything historic because there's nothing to keep historic, we don't have commercial historic buildings. But we have what I consider a huge responsibility to make sure that the buildings that come in to our downtown as commercial buildings in the historic district fit. They fit with how they look, they fit with the scale, just like Sherri said, the scale of the building next to Judd's is just wrong, it's off. We don't want that in our city. So I, I feel like we have to view it as a wonderful opportunity, a gift that we can give to future generations as we move forward and help the, the commercial district develop in historic Santa Clara. It's amazing and I just don't want to regret in 20 years that we didn't do anything. So that's my final thought. Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you for your service, everyone that's there, just appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mimi. Okay, I'm fishing for another comment. They're pointing at each other in the audience.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I will. Um, do I have my name first? I'm Tiffany Richard, I live in Santa Clara.
Give me your address, Tiffany.
1342 Sycamore Drive.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh-huh, I've been here two years and, um, I just, uh, one of the things we want, why we wanted to move here is because of the history, the historic, it's beautiful here. It's not just the trees, it's everything that's been preserved along Main Street. Um, you drive slow because you want to see it all. It's history and people, um, I just got back from Alabama last month where they preserved a little town there and I took pictures because I thought it was awesome. Um, and my husband, uh, is a developer and he developed a property in historic Sandy up in Salt Lake. He bought the property knowing he was in the historic district. Um, that didn't scare him. He just worked with the city and followed their guidelines and he produced a building that, that was in the guidelines, he, they were happy with. So I feel like if people know ahead of time they're gonna purchase land in the historical district, they know what they're buying and they know what's required of them and, and if it doesn't work, if it doesn't pencil for them, then they don't buy it. Um, so it's not a fight, you know? But I think the people here in Santa Clara, the ones I've met over the last two years, um, have created a, a beautiful community here and I think that, um, I've, I've appreciated what I've learned so far living here and I, I think that it's worth preserving for sure. Um, thank you for what you do on the council and for the service you provide and that's my input.
Thank you.
I wasn't gonna speak, but hey, we want, our voice is heard, so I'm gonna speak. Uh, my name's Malia Mary, I live at 4035 Colby Loop, uh, Santa Clara. We've been here for four years, a little over four years. And, um, moving in, we first moved to, uh, St. George, we bought a rental house and we didn't go further to build or buy and we looked and looked and looked, nothing felt right. So we drove up on that street and looked out over the farm and the trees and the valley and the mountains and it was the place for us. And, um, we moved from a little town, it was called the City and the Country, um, in San Diego, but it was, uh, Northeast County, it was a smaller community, it was a very country feel, we had a, we lived right off of the, uh, street that was very similar to Santa Clara Drive. It had the big tree that had an old historic house, it had a farmer's market every weekend. Um, they closed the street and everyone brought in their goods. Um, it had, uh, old, old refurbished, um, steam engine train that they had a little track go around and, um, we had a little tree farm for years right by our house. Um, we had horse trails through town, um, it just had that awesome country feel, so when we moved to Santa, came through Santa Clara, driving down the main street and it was like, like what we just left, that we loved, that part of what we loved, the California park, of parts. But anyway, um, it felt like home because it had that little small town country feel. Um, the trees, the homes, but even now, driving down, like, as you're driving down, you're looking at every little house, you're looking at every little thing and I love that, like Swoon, turned that cute little old house into a business. Why, I mean, I don't understand if we want more businesses, why can't we, if there's homes up for sale or that you're gonna redo, if you want businesses, make them in these homes or, or the businesses look like these homes, because that's what you're looking for. Like when we go visit other places around the country, around the world, we go to those little historic places. We don't go, maybe I'll, granted you go down to a big city for city things, but a big draw in any, um, like, you know, place you travel, a lot of times it's those little tiny mom and pop, little historic, um, homes and little, like, little restaurants. We went to this cute little place, it was like waffle and breakfast little place in this old little home, just like what we see and that's what you're like kind of looking for, or little boutiques, little more, more shops that you can walk to on, on a Saturday from the farmer's market to these little shops and you don't feel like you're in this big city with high rises moving over you. I understand the importance of bringing business to the city and for, I totally get that, but at the same time, there's opportunity, like has been said, to make it fit and make it complete that draw for more, um, that, more of that feel that we can preserve with the, the homes that are here already and not detract from them and add maybe more businesses that way as, as little homes and little shops and little restaurants and, um, we need more of that stuff here anyway. And I think that would be very, um, in with what we're trying to accomplish and I think working together with like what has been said with the commercial guidelines as well as the residential, that would be very, very helpful moving forward. Um, I'm a big fan of that idea, um, and that's all I can say. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Feeling like a fourth grade teacher waiting for volunteers to do book reports. Who else would like to say so?
Clayton Levitt, um, 2499 River Circle, uh, we, uh, I've lived in Santa Clara a little over 25 years. My wife grew up here and as a young boy, I went up and down the sidewalks, uh, going for my grandparents. Going from my grandparents' home to my aunt and uncle Jewel's home in the middle of Santa Clara, to my aunt Lester and Manola Whitworth's home toward the end of Santa Clara. And that was all that was Santa Clara. And so a lot of folks have recently moved in, in the last two years, five years and so forth. Santa Clara has really changed for us over the years. And I'm talking with my wife the other night, there's some discussion about, well, we had, we've had enough development here in Santa Clara, it's time to close the door on everybody else. And she, she just kind of looked and said, you know, we can't do that. This is Santa Clara, but we have to be smart in how we preserve and develop our community. I'd like to get more involved in the historic district from a building and a builder's standpoint. Because there's, it's really fuzzy to me. I stepped in last month and went to a historic district meeting. There's a new commercial building that was being presented between two historic homes, Swoon and, I don't know what you call the one on to the west of it, but they've really done a nice job of fixing it up. And the things that have been sent here tonight all ring true in that meeting. There needs to be a little more teeth in our design guidelines and what builders can expect. And so that those that are on the historic district kind of know where they stand. Mimi, I thought that did a very wonderful job trying to make suggestions here and here. Would this be okay with this builder to do this? Would it be okay to do that? And it was almost like the builders were stiffening up and saying, well, I don't know if we can do that. So there's, there's this question in the, from a builder's standpoint is, you know, we got, we bought this property, we should be able to develop it and it's going to be a real nice design. And she was pushing and trying to get them to do, make it more historic. Because I, I was right, right on her team. I wanted to see that happen. Raise the windows up a little bit, let's not make it so modern. Just some little things that would fit more nice with the neighbors. And I think that's a huge consideration that needs to be made, what's existing, okay? You're going to have something come in and be built right next door. Doesn't need to be all this white and they tiptoed around a little bit and got them to do some earth tones in the stone and the brick and the highlights. But I don't know if it's completely what the vision is for the historic district. I'm, I'm a little fuzzy as to what's historic. Everything from 1950 back. And then there's the building process that took place from 1950 to 1980. It looks a lot different than what we have to, you know, previously. And so I think there needs to be a separation between the two and I guess maybe there is, but I'm confused as a residence and I think a lot of other residents are confused as to what's historic and what's, what's, what does it mean to be historical? And there's been a lot of things, and Rick, going back to your point, Mayor, yeah, you had a lot of angry people because they got to do whatever they wanted to do from the 60s and 70s and 80s. And then you're going to slap this new restriction, de-restriction on them and say, you can't do this anymore. So I think we've gotten past that point to a degree. A lot of those folks are in Santa Clara Cemetery. Very good, very good people. And, but we got, I totally agree, we have a great opportunity. And I talked to a couple of their builder friends that would like to be involved, that live in Santa Clara, with the design and, and not, not just from a commercial standpoint, but maybe also from a residential standpoint. And can we get a fund put together, really a fund to help with some of the homes that need to be restored? And working with people, I think that'd be another, another great idea to, to look into because the buildings are charmed, charming and so forth, but when the, when the paint starts to pill off and the roof starts to sag, we need a, we need a facelift. And that would really add to our community. Just a couple of thoughts.
Thank you, Clayton. Anyone else like to address the council? Okay, well, say, we will accept additional written comments. If you're listening online and you would like to submit a comment, I need you to, you can send an email to myself or a member of the city council or to Brock. I need your name and address on that email. When you send it in or any written response, make sure you put your name and address. If there's no name and address, probably not going to pay much attention to it. We do want to compile all of the comments that we've received and provide those to the, the Heritage Commission and the Planning Commission so that they have that as they go through the ordinance development. I think the intent of the council, and council, you feel free to jump in, is to work closely with those two groups to develop some specific guidelines for the, the commercial side of things in the downtown to address commercial businesses and some of the things that Mimi talked about would be on that list. I'll probably be going through and reviewing the existing residential guidelines as well. There will be future opportunities for, for public comment. All of this is going to be in an ordinance that will require a public hearing. Probably have, once we get some ideas together, maybe another public meeting like tonight where some examples, some posters, some rendering, some photos can be blown up that we can get comments back from, from residents on. We don't want to go overboard. Hopefully I learned my lesson 20 years ago about trying to go overboard. But we want to give the, the commissions the information they need to do their job on the, on the regulation side of development and, and hopefully meet the intent and the wishes of the residents. So, council, anything to add to that in a general nature? And we'll be talking about this much more going forward. Anything you want to add tonight?
I've got a couple of things.
Go for it.
So I am curious about funding renovations. In the general plan, it talks about the CDBG grant, possibly in an avenue. Is that not really available to us or is it for this?
CDBG, our average median income is too high to qualify for federal CDBG grants. So that's not an option. There are some historic preservation options, grants that come available periodically. And one thing I know that would have to be is you would have to have a willing participant from the property owner. And so whether, that's probably the biggest holdup right now is, is if we got willing property owners that want to go through that process and, you know, compiling a list of that. But I think we get the requirements done. We can set up a fund and if anybody's out there's walking funny because your wallet's too big, we will accept donations tonight and I'll earmark them for the Historic Preservation Fund. And, and hopefully we'd be able to be successful in getting some money. The one of the problems with Santa Clara is we, we're too well off. We don't qualify for a lot of federal aid programs. And so we have to raise the money ourselves. And, but if we can get the right property, the right property owner, possibilities, some grants, some private funds, something like that could happen, Jared.
And Mayor, that's a good point, just briefly to the individual that spoke about her husband developing in Sandy City. Sorry, the mic goes in and out. I worked for Sandy City for a number of years and the only area in Sandy City that qualifies is the Historic Square Mile, the Historic District. None of the rest of the city qualifies for any CDBG fans, funds. And in fact, most of the CDB, CDBG funds go to Salt Lake City and the county and other municipalities that have a need to help fund their projects. So it is a tight window and it's tough to get those funds and we would not qualify.
I have a question.
Come on up. Whoa, got to come to the mic. No yelling from the back. Just state your name for me again.
Jane Burton. I'm just wondering if, if you know, if there's ways to have a grant writer? Do we have grant writers for our city?
We've worked with several grant writers before for grants for the city for like parks and trails.
Yeah.
There's, the opportunities are there. Once a project can be defined, then you can start going after the grants. The grants are typically written for very specific project work. So you have to kind of know what you're doing to go after it.
So with historic housing or houses?
Can you hear me now? It's going in and out. We'd have to take a look at that. Grants are always a competitive process and so we're competing against other municipalities in the state that may have the same needs and may indeed have more needs. So it's something we'd have to take a look at and the council would have to determine if it's a priority.
And you don't have to be low income in order to do that? It's historic because it's in a whole historic?
Correct, correct. But we would not get community development block grant funds. We do not qualify for those. It would have to be through grants.
Okay.
Another source.
Have you been writing grants yourself?
I have written some grants in the past, but not, not on this particular item, no.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
And I guess just to follow up on that, I just think of like the Vineyard Drive, you know, the new, all the work went into that and partnering with citizens and citizens had to give a little bit and city did its part. And I just wonder if we might want to consider something like that for the downtown where, I mean, we're balancing a budget of what goes to fire, what goes to police, what goes to everything and should there be, you know, enough in the general fund every year to partially fund a renovation downtown? I think I'm hearing from citizens that we want to maintain the feel down there and is that a good use of taxpayer funds? I would love to get some input on that for sure. My other input was, I think there's a general consensus that we want businesses downtown, we want to keep it vibrant. We're just worried about what that really means, like how that really plays out. And so we maybe want to consider a moratorium on, you know, projects in the downtown while we're working on getting teeth into the ordinance. I don't know how council would feel about that, but that would at least avoid fights when we know we're moving towards something we want, we don't know exactly what that is yet. So that's been another thing to think about.
Council could implement a pending ordinance that would basically delay any new commercial permit applications for a period up to six months. Can't go beyond that to, while they go through the process of developing ordinance. That's something that's available to you, council, if you want to consider that.
And then I mentioned this before, but I still would love to see some density requirements for the historic zoning. We've talked about that in council and I think I'm hearing that as well. We want smaller buildings, we want to maintain the feel of the downtown. And it was interesting though, like the last slide that Jim showed from the general plan, it talks about infill in like the back of large lots. And so there's definitely some give and take there on maybe you put another home behind or an ADU behind or something like that. But I think if we had some guidelines on density, that would help developers to know what we really want in the downtown and they'd know if someone's going to pencil before they even buy the property. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Jared. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, last chance. Alrighty, I appreciate everybody coming out. I appreciate the members of the committees that are here. It's, it's good to see you. We appreciate the work you guys do in the trenches. Want you to know that. I think all the council appreciates the members of the Heritage Commission and the Planning Commission. And also appreciate the residents taking time out of your busy life to come down and let us know how you feel. Again, if you can get, put any additional comments to us before next Wednesday, then we can get that information out to the Heritage Commission and Planning Commission so they've got that during their deliberations. Again, thank you. Okay, now the reason all of you probably came that didn't talk, because we're going to talk water efficient landscape and conservation standards. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor and council, and thank you to those who came tonight and participated in this discussion. As you know, we have a chapter, it's chapter 1792 of our city code that deals with water efficiency and landscaping and conservation. Recently, we've been informed by the Conservancy District and their board that we need to make some tweaks or changes to our ordinance. That's what we're here to discuss this evening. I had this discussion with the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. And a big reason we're here is the rebate program. So the Conservancy District and Board has asked that cities update their ordinances by the end of the year, which is December, just a couple of months away. So our residents could qualify for the rebate program if they choose to remove SOG from their property and work that out with the Conservancy District. So I want to go ahead and go through the ordinance itself. I should have had word of copy with people, we'll go through it. It's just, it's just some corrections, some updates and most of this language has been given to us by the Conservancy District. So this is just general cleanup, if we can scroll down slowly. Right here, so we have some definitions and we have a definition of active recreation area and you can see that's been deleted. And we're going with the definition. It says dedicated active play areas where irrigated lawns used as playing surface such as a sports field designated for public use. Active recreation areas shall be, number one, a minimum of 1,500 contiguous square feet of lawn area. Number two, not less than 30 feet in dimension. Three, not less than 10 feet from areas dedicated to vehicular use such as a street or parking lot. Four, designed and located to be accessible to large populations such as, such as at a school, daycare, recreation center, senior center, public park, private park, water park or religious institution. And five, co-located with amenities included but not limited to trash bins, benches, tables, walking paths, drinking water, playground equipment and/or other recreational amenity. And so if you scroll down, we have a couple more definitions that we've made some changes to. Here, lawn, they've asked us to adopt this definition, which is pretty simple, irrigated non-agricultural land planted in closely mowed managed grasses. And then the definition of mulch would change to materials such as, but not limited to rock, bark, wood chips uniformly applied on the surface of the soil to reduce evaporation and weed growth. Mulch is must allow, must allow penetration of water or air for purposes of this standard. Ungrounded pavers, stepson stones and artificial turf manufactured to be permeable to air and water may be considered mulch. We scroll down to planting bed, this is a new one, areas of the landscape that consist of plants such as trees, ornamental grasses, shrubs, perennials and other regionally appropriate plants. So we'll go down to the next section. This is dealing with single family or two-family residential. We have a change here. Currently our code reads like you see above, it says the total irrigated landscape area must not exceed 16% of the block square footage. It's been asked that be removed and we just go with the lawn area must not, must not exceed 8% of the lot square footage up to a maximum of 2,500 square feet of lawn area. Lots less than 7,500 square feet are allowed up to 600 square feet of lawn. And number two, single family homes with limited common areas designated for the exclusive use of the adjacent dwellings shall have the same allowances as a single family home. And we scroll down to the multifamily section now. Just hot water recirculation systems must be installed unless hot water delivery needs demonstrated to occur. So that's just the cleanup. Let's scroll down a little bit more. That's not That's not going to change. Here, um, we've added item number two or changed it to state new. In future installations, the plumbing fixtures must meet or exceed the water conservation requirement specified in the building code as adopted by Santa Clara City. So making that specific to us. Item number five, man-made ornamental water features are limited to twenty-five square feet per parcel and are limited to the parcel. So that's pretty specific and that changes the wording a bit because previously we talked about aggregate capacity and fifty, fifty square feet. Uh, so that's definitely a reduction. Number six talks about golf courses and adds the language shall have a separate meter and irrigate with secondary irrigation water. And that's just mistaken on my part. This is updated and you can remove that. We'll go down to item B, two and three. These are additions. Attached multi-family residential units may have up to a hundred square feet of lawn per dwelling unit. Properties with less than six dwelling units are allowed up to six hundred square feet of lawn. Three, lawn areas are prohibited for non-residential uses except for an active recreation areas appropriate, such as a child care center or athletic complex. Scrolling down. Just some general cleanup here. Then here, landscape, the gear, gave design and operation standards. Let's scroll down. Yep, I think for the most part that is it. Had a working copy, um, but I forgot it as I was more focused on our first discussion this evening since it's been something that's been talked about for quite some time. All right, this is just a discussion item. This one again was discussed with the Planning Commission two weeks ago. They were good moving forward, um, with scheduling a public hearing soon. So we can meet the date that the Conservancy District has asked us to meet. And I'm here as well as Dustin and the mayor to answer questions about this as they've been part of some of the focus groups that have been working on this change. And again, we're being asked by the Conservancy District.
Thanks, Jim. Council, any questions? I know you've seen, seen this before. Any question about the changes that Jim's talked about? This'll be coming back for your approval and could be the...
Probably first of December.
First of December.
Cause we have to queue a public hearing in November and then it'll come to you after that public hearing. Before the end of the year, definitely. And I guess seeing many communities aren't doing it by the end of the year, but we are.
We'll see. We're gonna, we're gonna meet our requirements. Okay. No questions, council?
Mayor, I just wanna clarify. Again, this came up in, as far as, this is specific to culinary water or, cause in the, in here it says landscape required to be served by secondary and not culinary. I mean, it's, um, uh, maybe I'm reading it wrong. Just said landscape improvements be irrigated solely with private, non-municipal water. So is that separate from irrigation, Dustin? It's, it just says may be exempt from certain provisions of this chapter. This is at the very top, sorry, seventeen, um, ninety-two, uh, ten. So I'm thinking that's reading maybe a well or, I'm just trying to understand. So when we put this in place, my understanding is, is the ordinance was specific to culinary water and I think it was written that way. Obviously that mean...
This is both, secondary and culinary.
With the restrictions?
But there is, a lot of the outdoor use restrictions don't apply if it's privately owned water.
Correct.
Like in, if you've got irrigation shares, irrigation company water, then those limitations don't apply to your outdoor use. It's only the outdoor use that you're using culinary on.
So how would that work specific to a subdivision that donates those shares back to the city?
If they've got the shares, um, right now and they were basically not gonna require them to give them to the city anymore, they're gonna be allowed to keep them, keep the irrigation company stock. We'll keep the two systems separate. So areas that aren't served by the, um, the private company, the canal company, the city has the option to, to install or require the installation of the secondary system. And then we'll use city secondary shares there and then they would be subject to these same requirements. That makes sense?
Kinda. Like I said, I'm just thinking...
It's a, it's a change from, from where we have been.
Yeah, that's, that's different from, that's my concern is it was presented when we voted on this. It was, it, it was, secondary was exempt. And so I'm just reading through this going, it's...
The problem we've got is we've got two systems that are functioning and it's either gotta be maintained wholly by the irrigation company or wholly by the city. We can't let it be city system, private system, city system, and hodgepodge that system through. Uh, after meeting with the irrigation company, um, kind of agreed that they would be allowed the option to, to keep their own shares and utilize them within their subdivision. The city would still be in the market to purchase any excess shares that they wanted to get rid of. But then they would be allowed to use their private water on their larger properties. A large lot doesn't, I mean, if you had limited a large lot to twenty-five hundred square feet or something, it doesn't make a lot of sense, cause what are they gonna do with the rest of that property? And if they already own the water, use it, we would let them continue that use there. They'll be subject to putting everything into our standard. They'll have to pay the, um, franchise tax on any water that is sold through their system, um, just like another private utility within the city. Um, we're not gonna require or ask for any kind of an exemption area from the water district. If you recall, we were kinda pushing, I was pushing strongly for an exemption area in the downtown to allow those private companies to work. Well, the other cities have added huge exemption areas to their systems that basically, they're wanting that same deal, though they don't have the private water to feed it. And so I'm, I just withdrew that request entirely. We have, you know, by good fortune of the, those that came before us, a very solid, um, canal company that has the water shares. They're good shares. They have agreement to, with the city of St. George to be able to use reuse when water's not available. That's a, that's a strong position for those irrigation shares. We're still providing the opportunity for them to sell water to the city if the shareholder deems he has excess and wants to get, sell it to the city and maybe avoid a re-adjudication in the future. We'll still be able to step in and do that. We're gonna expand the city system where it makes sense to expand the city system and allow the irrigation company to expand their system where it makes sense for them to do it and be able to maintain that themselves. So...
What are we doing with those who have already given us the water?
We've given, we're giving them the option. Given them the option to, um, we've met with Jason Lindsay, for example, and I think he's gonna take his back, right? The same option, we give them to Kent Frye. And those are the two that, that came in under that. And so basically it's their option.
This might be minor detail. So, so in those larger lots that have, again, mine's a perfect example of that. Would, again, I'm not, down the road it may change. Down the road as, as growth happens, things are, you know, there may be additional conservation and I recognize that. Maybe our downtown's the same. But in the, in the buyback, if, if someone's opting myself in that, you know, I should not be eligible to go back to the water conservancy to pay me to take out sod that I've, I've solely chose to put in because of the irrigation. It's not written in there, but I would imagine, and maybe it is, maybe I just missed it, but somebody on irrigation that chooses because they own those rights, then turns around, you know, ten years down the road and wants, you know, significant money to remove it, you know, of taxpayer dollars.
Exactly. That, I mean, the, the, right now, they're not eligible for the impact fee, um, waiver. So when we give them their water shares back, they're gonna be, pay the full impact fee when they go in to develop, not the fifty percent that, that you paid on yours. So they'll have to pay that. How we treat the, the buyback, I'm gonna leave that to the water district. They're the ones that's doing the buyback. And as things change, those ag shares may become more available or more, they're gonna definitely become more valuable. And there may come a time when they wanna give that, increase that incentive to get those particular shares because of the quality of the water. So that's kind of the direction going on that one. But you have, anything in the valley's not gonna be, um, they won't be able to get the buyback right now on turf without giving up some of their water. It won't just be you take it out, we'll give you a check. You take it out, you give us your water and maybe we'll give you a check, you know, for a difference. But it's such a small amount, the, the buyback is such a small amount compared to the value of the share that I, I don't think that'll be an issue.
Thank you.
That makes sense?
Yeah.
That's probably the biggest change of the whole thing. I mean, we've done a lot of wordsmithing, but that change on how we're gonna treat the shares in, in the downtown area, probably the biggest one. And we've had some good meetings, just to update you. We've had a really good meeting with the water company. I think things are moving forward. Jim was in that meeting and, um, so... We're just gonna get our franchise tax on all the water.
Is that, is that the water boss in the, in the crowd there?
Absolutely. I didn't, come on up. I need you to come up.
Oh, he's walking good.
He's walking better. He was, where's your brace? You took the brace off today.
I did. Jim asked, eight hundred old farm road, I'm on the canal company. There's been a real change in the last two months with the canal company, the city. And, uh, I, I think the, the desire of the city is to keep the water in, in town and the desire of the canal company is the same. We're not looking to sell to the Conservancy District or anything else. We wanna keep the water here. And, uh, and so there's a, I look forward to a great relationship with the city. I don't know what it looks like yet, but some kind of a relationship that we work together and that we are enemies on, you know, where the water goes and what happens. So I think, you know, the only thing I would say is, you know, we talk a lot about the historic feeling in Santa Clara. My concern is if we lose the lawns and other things, we lose that historic feeling. It's what Santa Clara looks like. We've got a few yards in town that really could use some water on it and use some, you know, that's where I'd like to see some changes take place. I don't care what, it doesn't matter what the building looks like sometimes if there are yards present. And that's where we could put some efforts in some of this other area. I think as far as the canal company, we're on board with the city, working together to create, make that water available, so.
Appreciate that, Jim. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Questions for Jim? Ask him a hard one. Okay. Dustin, anything to add on this one? All right. Well, staff reports. Chief, come tell us a story.
Story. Can you press it here? We, uh, you got my report. We'll be seeing that over soon. And I hope, I, last time we met, I thought we were gonna beef that up. And I hope that, I know I can give you one comment, so I guess everybody's really happy with that. So we'll continue to learn that. Last weekend, we assisted the county and, and hurricane. We had a large motorcycle rally of our, they call themselves Alaw motorcycle groups in town. It was seven hundred and they, they went well, no problems. It was a little scary a little bit on a couple of things, but it went fine. Uh, just a couple of things about some of the things that, um, we've had Sergeant Togo just get back from the FBI, Staff and Command School, even up there. And, uh, Rich Rogers just got back from the Chiefs National Division in San Diego. I don't know if you remember Wade Carpenter, if you remember Wade?
I do.
Wade's just been elected the national president, which is a huge, huge deal for the state of Utah. And he's the director of all the Chiefs associations for the United States and international. So it's a real compliment to him. I just wanted you all to know that. Out of those trends, they came back, they brought us all the things. They were talking about, you know, employee issues in small towns like ours. They're talking about the First Amendment, uh, and that deals with your social media, which your employees can post what they can and not. And there was some really interesting things that come out of that. You have a lot more control of that than you realize. And he says, the thing that people misunderstand is the First Amendment is to protect the citizens from the government, not government from government. So if you're an employee, you have some restrictions if you work for government, the things that you could post online about your agency, your city. And it's across the board with all employees and he said that. What was really interesting, and this is according to Rich, that the attorney that handles that nationally says he can't think of a case where the city is lost. So if you have good, good policies and you're restricted those. They also said that particularly for law enforcement, if the agency says, no, you can't post things on the internet that are critical and you run the uniform, things like that, or using the city, you could be terminated for that. And it's, it's quick and easy. So there was a lot of things there. They talked about if you're a small city like ours, um, in law enforcement and you're able to retain your employees longer than five years, you're doing something right. He said, don't expect employees to come to stay. It's just not the way they, they operate anymore. And then they, they talked about retaining, uh, your employees. They said that people are not as concerned with retirement as they used to be. I said, well, you're, you're probably talking to young officers that don't think anything more than a month in advance. So, uh, they were talking about things that you can do. So when we come back, I'm gonna talk to Brock and try to get on the city council next month to come in and give you our, our report I've been promising. We're kind of ready to go. I just wanted to get Rich and, and Togo back in the schools to come back and see. But the really good news story is here is we're hitting all the marks. There wasn't much there that we're not on top of, but I really liked the First Amendment issues. I was really confused by the social media and the control. And then there was a lot about grandma, because I know that in Washington County, we were talking about going to this system on our radios where you scramble. As we used to call scramble, I don't know what they call it. Where people can't listen to your, your radio traffic. See, they can't do that. That's public information. If you don't want it as public information, don't put it on the radios. And, well, that kinda surprised me. I didn't, so like, you know, we have, uh, somebody was coming to grandma on our radio traffic last Thursday and they want to, they can get that. So they said, if you're, you're working at the laundry, if you're about to spend hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to scramble your radio system, you might not be able to do that. There's ways to protect that information, but you just can't make it real point to come on. So I thought that was some interesting stuff. That's basically the report. Like I said, we'll come back and give you the, I wanna give you the, you know, the crime trends, the multi-housing kind of issues that we're hearing a lot about, some of the things that, uh... And I, I, and actually you can be contacting, uh, Brock and the mayor. And if you have anything, anything specific you want us to address as it pertains to Santa Clara, I'd love to bring that and be prepared to report it to you. So if you have anything at all that you wanna see, you have questions about, we'll get prepared and bring that information to you, so.
Great.
That's all we have.
Questions for chief? Thanks, chief. Appreciate you. Chris Dale? Nothing? Okay, Ryan?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll hold it over here. Senior games is in full swing. It goes through this Saturday. One thing that's changed this year, we've never had them play pickleball on our courts before. Rosie called me about two weeks ago. They're scrambling, had so many teams sign up. Their games are gonna go until one or two o'clock in the morning, which obviously would cause problems with neighbors. So they called every place in the county. Everybody either said no or wouldn't return their calls. So we asked if they could play on our courts, which of course we let them. I'm terrible with names, so I don't remember their names, but the lady and gentleman that were running it, I met with them. They had some awesome southern accents from back east. I'm terrible with names, so I don't remember their names, but the lady and gentleman that were running it, I met with them. They had some awesome southern accents from back east. Uh, real good people. Just wanna make sure they had everything they had, that they needed. Uh, our nets were in good shape, but they weren't weighted at the bottom like they used to play on, you're used to playing on. So they had some grant money, so they bought us some brand new nets for them to use and also to show their appreciation. So we've got some new nets at our pickleball courts. Uh, like I said, that ends Saturday and then tournaments start next weekend. So the crew is plenty busy. Uh, I had a class come out from the university last night. Had about thirteen students there for about two and a half hours, working over on Black Rock Park. Cutting all those big bushes way down, they will grow back, so it's good for them, I, I promise. But they did the front planer. It looks great. You can actually see the park now. Uh, got another class coming out Saturday, expecting twenty-five to thirty students. So we'll just pick up where they left off and work around the perimeter, perimeter of the park. Good news, I got, the cemetery curving will be going in the end of next week, so we can get that off the list. So I'm, I'm still waiting to see it, but, yeah. Just a, an announcement, uh, I don't know if any of you know Celeste Hallman, she's Murray Goobler's daughter. On October twenty-eighth, she is putting on the Southern Utah Down Syndrome Mighty Steps Extravaganza. It's gonna be at the Swiss Pioneer Memorial Park. Originally, it was gonna be at Canyon View Park, but the parking lot now under construction, moved it over there. So she says they're expecting anywhere from two to four hundred people. So it's the first one they've done down here, so she just doesn't know, but it's for a good cause, so it'll be a good deal. Um, next Wednesday, just a heads up, corner of Gatesland and Santa Clar, or Santa Clara Drive, the Warby's home. We've got B.A. Robinson coming out to trim that large stick more in their front yard, so there will be a lane diversion. Utah barricades gonna set up there. Should only be there for a couple hours. Be out ten o'clock in the morning, so shouldn't cause too much of a problem. So that's all I've got. Any questions for me?
Where, where are we with the orchard? Just, um, redesign? Uh, where, where do we stand on that? I know we've gotta sign up, but there were some thoughts that maybe different variety of trees, maybe a different layout. Just maybe update us where we're at.
Uh, we've talked about it. I think obviously we wanna do maybe one part at a time. Um, I've, I've actually talked to Jim about it. Start on the north end and, uh, put some trees in as far as timeline. I, I don't, don't have that right now. We're still funding and other, other concerns. But, uh, yeah, the design is most likely gonna change. It's, it, it looks great, but just some concern as far as usage and do we need everything that's on the design? Uh, a couple of the trellises and stuff like that, for example, nothing serious, but classroom, if we have a classroom and bathrooms, then it's just more we have to maintain. Availability volunteers, that kind of thing. But as far as timeline goes, until we can figure out exactly what we're doing and, and where we can get funding, we're still trying to find that.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, I'm, I'm the orchard as well. I got, I think Jim asked me to call a meeting on it as soon as possible. And then I've had a resident, a resident reach out and say they're wondering what's going on with the orchard. So it might be good if we just met and just kind of had a, just that same committee we had before and kinda get a couple ideas of what kind of cost we're really looking at. And if there's anything we can do in the budget, things like that. So I know it's a busy time of the year for you, but if you can, schedule a meeting, that would be really helpful, I think, just to get everyone up to speed.
We can do that. And I, if I remember right, Brock actually put some money in there to purchase trees in this budget year.
Right, that's what I remember.
So, I mean, there's some money to at least get something going, but again, we gotta figure out the design and put in infrastructure and all that for when the construction, the road widening takes place and stuff like that, so.
I think that's one of the big things going forward is the north end, that we've got the Ramona Hayfen home there and then with the road exit. How far in do you get before then you have to come to the construction you don't wanna put in? And then have to be removing what you've put in when we come in and that whole process happens. So we, we do need to sit down with, uh, with Jim and others and say, okay, let's get what we can do without causing, when that road has widened, when we do make that transition, that we don't cause ourselves more expense by ripping out what we've put in, so.
It seems, I mean, it seems like we could get grading, get the stumps, you know, get, get the irrigation. I get, you know, the trees are gonna take four years before they produce, so it's, it's, the sooner we can get something, even if it's staged, I don't, you know, if you could, we could figure out equipment, grading and irrigation. That'd be even the main line irrigation where you pick up, I don't like, I don't mind the idea at all that maybe just that northwest corner, you get, you know, ten or twenty trees planted that you kinda phase that in. Might be good for that anyway.
Does that sound like Ben wants to be in that committee as well?
You're invited. Let's do it.
I missed the one last night for ma, with mayor, so I was here at the candidate forum. They were great.
Thank you, Ryan. Dustin?
Good evening. Um, Vineyard Drive Phase Two is moving along. We finally got the gas line relocated. Uh, the TDS communication has all come off the poles. The poles have been removed. Um, Sentry Link is down there working. They need till the end of the week to relocate their line. We've got a blade scheduled for next week and curb staking and hopefully curb within the next two weeks. Um, Phase Three Water, the city crew's been working on services up to Camus Lane and about there, so we can abandon the old line and patch that part of the road up to there. And then from Camus up, they just have to do those services, so both projects are finally starting to come together. Me and Ryan had a, uh, pre-construction meeting with the BMX and Canyon View parking lots this week. They've started up there on the upper lot of the Canyon View Park. They're estimating about a two-month completion date for both lots. Um, I'm still working with Horrocks Engineering on the traffic and transportation plan update, meeting with them monthly. We had a kickoff meeting last week with the My Meter app. We're hoping to get that up and running by February or March, hopefully before we, we start to see some demand. Um, we're sending out letters to residents with secondary water connections with permission of the Canal Company. They'll, they're now willing to hook up non-shareholders. So they said that they would be on board if we would take care of mailing out the letters. They'll work with the residents on hooking up some of those connections. So hopefully we get some takers there. Black Desert started our sixteen-inch water line from Snow Canyon Parkway into Santa Clara. Um, with that, I've got a ten-inch pressure-reducing valve I've got to upsize, so I'm working with a contractor, since it's in the Solus project, to do that at the same time. So that's exciting to have that coming into town. Um, I'll be bringing the Crest of Irrigation line to council next week for approval for the design. And I'm also bringing, um, a design for the four-way traffic signal at, um, Red Mountain and Pioneer. That's, uh, in our capital facilities plan and impact feasible, so that's something we're gonna move on now. I put in for some more funding today for the Western Corridor for fifty percent design and EA and mitigation. So I'll know in the next few weeks if we're awarded some more funding there.
How much was it, Dustin?
I need seven hundred more.
Seven hundred thousand?
Yeah. There's two point eight available, so hopefully we can get that. I know I've got the other cities on board, so hopefully it's a project that'll go through.
They gonna look at it all the way to Sun River or just to?
Just first phase to Gap Canyon, yeah. Um, I sent off our groundwater study to our well drillers, and they really like both locations, but they says they're really concerned with water quality. They've dug, dug some other holes in some areas nearby, and they feel that it's, um, it's a half a million dollar to a million dollar gamble and may not get what we want. I talked to them more about redeveloping well number seven, and they wanna give me some proposals on cost and things that we can do. So I'll be bringing that back to council and we can make a decision on what our best option there is to do. And I don't know if you noticed the new bike lanes on Santa Clara Drive. They go from two a week to Snow Canyon Parkway. It was a regional trans, active transportation plan, and it was, uh, paid for by the, uh, MPO. That's all I have. Questions?
Were they concerned with water quality on both sides?
Yeah. And depth. Depth's a concern. You know, you may have to go possibly eight hundred feet deeper than we are right now. You know, put you into the eighteen hundred, two thousand foot range, which just drives your costs up even more.
Can we be thinking about some sort of ribbon cutting for the parking lots when they're done? If we're only two months away, it'd be nice to, we could invite the chamber out or we could do something ourselves. It'd just be really nice to really celebrate that and, and, you know, thank the county for their funds and everything as well.
Sure, we'll put that together.
Let's make sure we get a completion date before we schedule the ribbon.
Absolutely.
It doesn't have to be day, yeah.
Winter's coming.
Mayor, that's what social media is for. We can, we can frame the picture so it looks finished.
That's what I'm worried about. Let's make sure we're gonna hit the date. Ben will schedule the ribbon. Thanks, Dustin. Chief?
All right, Mayor. Council, good evening. So, open house, sounds like that went pretty good. I know a couple of folks showed up, and I think they had about a hundred people. Um, kinda got that up and going. I know the guys have done it for years past, but, uh, a lot of, I don't know if you had an opportunity to attend, but a lot of facility maintenance has been going on, painting. Painting, kinda updating the ivans on stations, well, stuff that the crews can do, so I'm proud of all those, those guys who've been putting on quite a bit of work to improve our facilities and then obviously manage that open house, so. Other things, SC Library on the thirtieth, we'll be doing a trunk retreat over there. The guys will be over there, um, with folks. It'll be kinda fun. We're gonna be going up to Boise here shortly to do a mid-inspection on our, um, fire engine that's coming, that Type Three, Type Four, that Wildland brush truck we'll be using next year. So I think we've got that more solidified date in April, so it should arrive before the fire season comes, so. Building on that, I know I mentioned it last, um, work meeting for the public safety stuff, but, uh, we'll have, it's right around three hundred and thirty thousand is what we'll end up invoicing for our Wildland revenues. So we have one more that's out, that's for two sixty-seven, so that'll be good to get that back and we can kinda balance some of the expenses on that, so. Um, we have a mental health program. I've talked about it in pass, but we got a grant through DPS on that, but it's an app that folks can use. And with that comes a chaplaincy program. There was state legislation that required us to take action on mental health, address it. Uh, but one of them is our chaplaincy. So we have five different, uh, folks. It's not necessarily religious, but it's, um, to help folks with like untimely deaths is usually when we call them out. They come out at two AM in the morning to address family member concerns and work with mortuaries and those things. So that's a new program that we have, but it's all run through an app. It's through a company, uh, like Lexible. It's a well-known company, so. Um, that was good to unveil that. And again, we've been working on the facilities and, um, lots of personnel stuff, some other, um, just equipment and things we've been kinda, I, one of my goals is, again, improve our facilities towards the end of the year and kinda get an idea of what we need for, um, next, next year, next budget year, so that's all I have.
Questions, council?
I haven't seen the ladder truck dip, dip hole into town last week.
Did it? I didn't see it.
There's one by the freeway up by Spanish Fork.
It's sitting out.
Yeah, just sitting out in the field. Go check it out.
Oh, yeah.
By Spanish Fork, yeah. It's just sitting in the field. I thought, there's Ben's ladder truck.
We pulled to the job with it on a trailer. Just pull it up.
I was just gonna give kudos to your, your fire, firemen. They did an amazing job on Saturday. Everyone who attended from the fire demo, the fire attack demonstration to the extrication that they did, I mean, it was incredible. And they were so good with the kids. They allowed them to run the fire hose and spray some water. It, it, it was very well done, so thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, they're doing a great job, but thank you for passing that proclamation. Mark, I think they did a good job with that, it sounds like so.
He did.
Thanks.
Other questions, council? Thanks, Chief. Jim?
Well, all right. Um, going back to the pickleball thing that Ryan brought up, I just had a quote here. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America and leading contributor to Instacares and ER rooms nationwide with a fifty-plus crowd. So, um, anyways, we're staying busy. Uh, the two items this evening are things that we're currently working on. Uh, I've got a fun item, and it'll be of interest to Lena. She's probably noticed the Pioneer Home behind Fry's Market is nearing completion. I reached out to John Graff, the architect who came and presented to us, uh, trying to schedule a time where Heritage, Heritage Commission can come visit. He said it's gonna be a couple of weeks. It, it's, it looks beautiful from the outside, but there's still interior work that needs to be done. So that's kind of exciting. Um, that, that's a success story. Um, planning commission next week. Um, we have a few items. We're going to have the Pioneer Point preliminary plat review on the planning commission agenda for Clayton Levitt's project, who was here earlier this evening. That's something that will likely come to the council in November. And then we have three wall signs. Um, so the GeoVango Building Two is moving forward with the tenant finishes, as you're all aware of. Uh, the wall signs require planning commission approval. We have the Posh Blow Dry Bar, so that's the name, Jarrett. We have the Thrive Drip Spa, and then we have Jersey Mike's. So those are all gonna be on next week. Alfredo A's is a, a few weeks out. Uh, we're waiting on some things for them. Um, Cody isn't here tonight, so I was just gonna cover some of the building department stuff, uh, as I see it. Um, we, in the city works portal, we have three permits for the Solus subdivision for single-family homes that are being looked at. We have the first building in Desert's Edge, which is a six-plex, so that's what would be six building permits for the townhomes for Robert Smith's project. Uh, we got to resubmit all the construction drawings for the Dialysis Center, which will just be west of Lammies. Um, so that's exciting that we're getting something there. And then we have some movement on, um, South Village at Black Desert. We received the construction drawings, and I believe they're working with Dustin on a grading permit. They, I, I don't know the status of that, but we've got water lines and other things going on, so we're looking to move forward. So we're staying busy, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions for Jim, council?
I, I have a comment from a resident from last night, and I don't remember, um, the kids, they live on Sagebrush, and I think maybe they talked to you too, Jarrett. When we approved the GeoVango second part of the subdivision that faces east, um, I don't remember when we did all those, if we had any requirements for their signs to turn off their lights in the evening. I know we did with Dollar Tree and Fox.
Yeah, so the building, the first building that's in place, um, where we have the soda mix and the, um, the tie and the aloe, care. They face those residents to the south. They know that the light, uh, signs have to be off at ten PM.
Okay.
And so that is required. Do we wanna put the same on the new building that is facing east? Cause those were facing south, cause I can tell you Alfredo A's is looking to be open a little bit later, like they are on their Glove Street Riverside Drive location.
I, my, my opinion is to protect the residents that will back up to them on the west side. Ye, yes, that would be my opinion. Um, and then my request-
On the west side, the homes on the west, not, yeah, okay.
And then, and then my, my request would be, I know the one concern that they, that they asked was that the Royal Tie sign is not being turned off. So it's quite bright, I guess, but it doesn't go off when they go home. They understand it needs to be on, but, but once it's closed-
That's required, and I believe the person that did that permit is doing one of the ones that's on next week, so I'll be sure to follow up with it.
So if you can just mention it to them.
Yeah, they know that. It's supposed to be ten PM, so I, I, the idea of it on the west side turning off, that makes sense. On the east, it's more visible to Pioneer, so, okay.
Anything else? Thanks, Jim. Brock?
Just a, a few things. Uh, I don't know if you, if I've mentioned this before, our new court clerk, Tia Benson, that started, filled in for, uh, took, uh, Lisa Bundy's spot. Uh, she's been doing great. She came, what, nineteen years from the county justice court, so doing really well. Uh, with court, they're, talked, they're gonna go back to in-person court, potentially first of the year, so that'll be, be a change. Back to that. Uh, budget, we've been talking some budget with staff and that, so the time of year is about, about here. Audit finished, so we're straight to budget for next year. But the audit should be coming November eighth for presentation to, to council and that. Little bit to fire, maybe I've had some discussions with- to council and that. A little bit to fire, I've had some discussions with Washington City City Manager regarding the station alerting system. If you recall, we bought the station alerting system throughout the entire county. Everybody bought into this system. From what I've been told, it's only being used kind of at half its capacity. So we're working trying to, with other municipalities, we need to work to get everybody on board to use it to its full capacity. Some of what it can do is everybody needs to have all their, their apparatuses, all their equipment in there where they're located. So when it comes to paging, they know, dispatch can know what they can page. Also with that, some of the things where you need to work on with other municipalities is getting automatic aid agreements instead of just mutual aid agreements. We have some that don't want to do the automatic aid. They want mutual aid, which means we have to call and ask them to come and help us. Instead, what we like and what this system can do is it will see in the system what, if it's automatic aid, who is the closest responding unit to that situation, which is what we should be after in general, is where can we get the fastest, quickest aid? If, if I had a heart attack and Gold Cross is sitting across the street, but I'm in Santa Clara and I gotta wait 15 minutes for Santa Clara to get there, it's like, that doesn't make sense if Gold Cross is sitting there. But that, without the automatic aid, that's how it is essentially operates. So we've got some, some work to do to get that station alerting and those agreements in place. Fire truck, ladder truck funding. As it was discussed in the August meeting with Ivans, working to get a meeting with Dell to have a discussion about funding and how we can go about funding to get an apparatus. We both have that in our capital facilities plan, so Impact Fees can help pay for that. I know there was discussion about you getting a used one that we could get more now. Was, if you guys saw on the news, just recently, the, the rollover that happened on 91, that went down quite an embankment. As some of the staff said to me, a ladder truck would have been very useful to extend that ladder down to them, to get those patients and those people back out instead of having to try to carry them in a basket back up that big embankment. So those are some of the times they could use it. It's not necessarily, wasn't a fire, but it could be very useful in getting to people quicker and easier transport than trying to haul them and calling up that embankment. So I'm gonna get with Dell and see if we can't find, maybe as we talked about, putting some money in escrow. So when we find one, we can. We did recently, kind of saw one that was pretty nice, but we've got no funds in it and it disappears pretty quick if they're, if they are of pretty good quality. So I'm gonna work with Dell and doing something that way. We put their funds and art together and we can look at trying to find something, so. We'll be bringing back to you guys some additional policies that will kind of add to the policy manual. So a few policies we'd like to bring back to council to adopt. That would be some just addendums to the personnel policy manual that when we do our rewrite again, we'll add them in. I think Lance has maybe talked about it before, Engageify, the legislative tracking software that we, we purchased, that so we can track legislation as the bills are coming through. We can, which ones are gonna affect municipalities and what, maybe avenue they will. So if it affects public safety, we can send it to the chief and see what it does. If it's a streets thing, we can send it to Dustin. He can look at it and say, okay, here's what the effects, and we can, you know, get information back to the league or whoever. Same to council, we can send it to you guys and say, hey, what are you guys' feelings on this? And so we're having a, there's a small kickoff. Lance is getting some additional information to them and then we'll have another kickoff. So you guys might see some things, some emails coming to you about Engageify. So just be a heads up on that. The other thing, the National League of Cities Annual Conference is in middle of November and myself and Jim and Lance are actually, are gonna go attend that for the first time. There's some good things we saw in there that, that would be important to go and see some things that are happening and maybe what cities are doing outside of Utah, kind of getting a different look and perspective on things. So we're gonna attend that. It's the middle of November, so. And that, candidate forum last night was, was good. I would, we had 40, 50 people there, so it was pretty good. I, speaking with another city manager, they had one on Monday night and, from a larger city and only had 20 people attend there, so. That was, for us, a good turnout, so. Love to have more, but a good turnout. So, that's it.
The meeting with San Diego Ribs, has it been rescheduled?
Not as of now, has not. So we do have the one Monday, Monday with Representative Walters.
Four o'clock with Representative-
Yeah, not just here.
Questions for Rob, counsel?
Thank you for turning in our report. We were on the list.
Don't worry. I'd be probably, Jim got it turned in.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can I go? Dustin, I've got a question on your patching on Phase Three. And maybe it's just a, we're looking to do that road, hopefully first of next, next budget year.
Correct.
I'm, obviously I don't live there, I drive that, but is there any reason we wait and just save that? I don't know what the cost is to patch that, but is that-
It's just the poor residents.
I know.
They've lived with that for a long time. I put it in the bid to get it done. If that's something you all agree we can hold off on, we certainly can.
What, what's the cost of it?
I think it was around 12.
Okay, that's not terrible.
Yeah. That's us doing the prep. All we're, all we're gonna sub out is the paving.
I mean, the way they're going on Fa, I know it needs to go into next budget year, but I'm assuming we're gonna jump right on Three, hopefully. I, I just got, I think that's the plan. Don't stop, don't stop and not get Chad's, ah, space done, so. He's paid up years ago. But that was my thought. I didn't know what the cost was and I thought, man, if we could make it a few months. I mean, it's more than a few, but maybe we can start in April, a couple months early. So, all right.
I have a question. Can we do a quick PCA report? The power department's not here, but can we maybe demonstrate how to find it on the website so everyone knows? Lance did this recently. So if you just go to santaclarautah.gov, which is our new website, that some people need to remember. It's encouraging, is I guess what I want to say, but we should at least talk about it real quick.
Is it under utilities, Jarrett?
No. So this may be another UI thing we could talk about, but no, you go to departments and then power. And then you scroll down to PCA data per month. That right there, if you click that, that'll bring up and up to date what the PCA is right now, what it's been for the last, what, 12 months. So it's kind of hard to see, but the PCA for October is less than half of a cent. We were up to almost eight cents at one point. So power department's doing a good job and hopefully that trend is continues or maybe it just goes away or stays really minimal or even goes the other direction, so.
Yeah, it, it is doing finely what it always said it would do and it would dip down. But now it also will, as time will pick up those, the summer months, which were never, were not as bad as kind of some of the historical ones, as we've talked a lot. The December and January were just extreme months. Across the nation, I was, I did some research, looking at things recently. Across the nation, the average a person pays per kilowatt hour is over 15 cents per kilowatt hour, is the average people pay across the nation. Right now, our top tier is like 10 and a half cents per kilowatt is what we pay, minus the PCA being added into it, but that, that's our top end. As you know, you know, recently, other municipalities raised rates. Washington's top end tier is up at 17 cents per kilowatt. And so there's been a lot of things and, and it, it's hard to, we don't control those power rates when rates decide to go up, whatever that pressure is. But, you know, the generators have helped. We always hope they're functioning like they should to help keep us out of that market and buying that high power. So PCA is, looks good.
Yeah, for sure.
Is the power cost estimator that's on there real time?
No. I mean, you can click on it. We need to ask Lance.
This, this is, you can go on and say, what, if you use this much power, this is what your, roughly what your bill would be. So if you said you're roughly, your kilowatt usage is-
So maybe it is because it shows PCA.
Yeah. Is the PCA just inaccurate?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if you use 2,000 kilowatts, that's what your, your bill would be roughly on power. So you can go in and estimate there. We don't have, I know, years past, we had, before we did the, with the new website, Cristel had developed and had on the website kind of a, a bar you could drag across. If I used here, this is what my bill would be in Santa Clara, here's what it'd be in all the other municipalities. We, we don't have it in this new one. I can't, I, I think it's Dixie Power has that. Now granted, they don't have in that the calculator because you don't know what PCAs are. We have a PCA. Dixie Power has a PCA, Washington has a PCA. And you, it's hard to get those because they won't know what those are. So doing that, you kind of have that factor out, so it's not completely accurate, so. But I know they have one that you can get a rough estimate, so.
That's great.
Gary is at UAMPS, that's why he's not here. He's off at UAMPS yesterday and today, so. I, oh, maybe I'll just add, I do, I know that it's been grim on the carbon free, very, picture's been grim, but last Gary told me they're in some renewed interest in subscription to the carbon-free power project. Still one of the hindrances has always been transmission, getting them to people who, who would like to get in, so. We'll still wait and see what happens.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we, who said something? Okay, we stand adjourned.
Love the work. And it's, it price varies.
Now, yeah, it's a privately owned commodity and so you're buying a share in an irrigation company-